All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. It is 2:01 PM. My name is Time Answer, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, and to my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Emily Klaus. We have interim County Manager Robin Campbell and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder as well. We're starting off today with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair, would you like to do a land acknowledgement?
Yes, sir. We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Next up is opportunity for the public to address the board. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. When called, please introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. Speakers are limited to four minutes and may not donate time to other speakers. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, or remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal. All materials provided to the county may be considered public records and subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256, RCW. I will handle the folks that have signed up, and then we'll go to anyone on Zoom that might wish to provide testimony. First is John Pettit. Terry Stanley Ballard is on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live at, I live in East Olympia, at the Deschutes River Ranch. Today, I had a couple particular things. I kind of miss having our, our meetings every week because it eliminates half the opportunity for the public to be able to actually make public comment to the people that are representing them. That makes it really, I mean, it might be more convenient if people have other jobs that they can't be around town or something, but showing up is what we have to do and showing up is what the Commissioner should have to do also. So today, I wanted to comment that I'm in good anticipation of the future County Manager showing up. It might be just what we need to help clean up some of the issues that are going with the county. You know, I clearly have been waiting for a timeframe, and I'm hopeful that I can get an opportunity to start communicating. I requested a email address. Perhaps I can start emailing him information about some of my past concerns, current concerns, make sure that he's aware of things like a state audit that is pending right now, because the county has some serious issues. One of the issues that we're going to need to do if you're ever going to cure the problems is you're going to have to start making land development reasonable for people to be able to develop their property. Every opportunity that the county has to help encourage development is beneficial. It will also raise your tax revenue. I, I wrote a little thing, and I'm not giving you a copy of it right now, but we started this meeting with a little thing that happened here. We call the, the Pledge of Allegiance. And while we like to talk about democracy, democracy, the first thing I'm going to note to you is, is that we're in a republic. Now, we use a democratic approach for voting purposes, but I was concerned because, as you know, I have other projects out here that are on the, on the list of potential things like zoning changes and such. And all of these people that are submitting these, they're, they're property owners. They're the ones that own the property. It is not a democracy of, we got a lot of comments from people that don't want you to develop property. They don't own it. They can buy the property if they want, and then they can control not developing it. But what's really needed is, we need to have services available for the public. We need more housing available for the public. We need more businesses available. You want to stop having so much use of gas? Locate more opportunity for people to do business closer to their homes. Growth is inevitable. We need to have it in order to have a thriving community. I would encourage anybody that wants to come visit me and talk about this. I would really like it. I think that we need to make some changes. And I think the last little bit of closing, as I'm going to go back to this idea, is this is a full-time job being a County Commissioner, 24 hours a day. It's not a three-day-a-week job, or show up on Zoom twice or three times during the first couple days and then show up for a meeting once a week. You guys are getting about $140,000 a year. Show up, be here, and let's get the meetings back on track for a weekly event so the public has a right to make comments and let you know what they think. Leaving messages don't get very far. Thank you.
Terry Stanley Ballard is up. Chris Peters on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard. I live in Tanglewild, which is unincorporated Thurston County. Also, I'm a 35-year vet. 29 of it was on active duty retiring in 2012. Just to let you know, I, I thank God every single day for not getting elected. I'd have to deal with a mess. And Mr. Pettit would have been my executive assistant, and it was, I, I really don't care to live in a glass house as you do. Office space. RCW 36.16.090, "The Board of the County Commissioners of several counties of the state shall provide a suitable furnished office for each of the county offices in their respective courthouses, and may provide additional offices," which is, which this is, "elsewhere for the officers at the Board's discretion." Did we miss the RCW there? Okay. 1861, it was established, the county seat. Okay? Annexation, annexation of Olympia does not constitute a wider county seat. It takes a vote of the people. Two-thirds vote of the people, per the RCW. I guess we missed the law completely. Office at the county seat. The county treasurer shall keep an office at the county seat. Wow, he's here. Is this a courthouse? That's in RCW 3629.170. I noticed you had two, two things on your consent agenda, which was J and K. They're voucher listing, okay? When I was in the military, I couldn't buy anything from my credit card unless it was pre-approved. Are we spending money before it's been approved by you? That's called an unauthorized distribution of funds. I don't want to destroy the auditor's inspection, but every time they find something, they kick the can down the road. I, I don't have any trust in that. Also, in, also, the new manager, I wonder if he's aware of Resolution 15933, which gives him supreme authority over you to, so you don't go down to the individuals down below and, and quantify anything that he puts on your agenda. It's illegal, per your resolution. And it takes a majority vote of the, of you to authorize you to go down to lower levels of government. Okay? Gee. And if you want anything quantified, I'm sure the prosecuting attorney's office is open to write a paper on it, as the county seat was established by Attorney General, by the Assistant Attorney General, Greg Wire. As far as the assessor's office, biting into my Veterans Fund, and I will say my Veterans Fund, Veterans Fund is RCW 73.08. It's for your reading. It's an individual fund, that you're not providing any assistance to veterans. None. Okay? You got more people going out for administrative costs than you do for the Veterans Fund. Okay? So now we come up with this thing where the assessor's office is going to get money because the RCW says that veterans can apply for, disabled veterans who have a, a lower income can apply for benefits. Well, in Senate Bill 6238 applies for property tax waiver for veteran, for veteran widows. Are we going to charge the veteran widows the same thing? Okay? Are we going to charge the retirees who, who are 65 and do not have the income for the service that you're providing out of, illegally out of the Veterans Fund? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Peters, Mike Brewer on deck.
Chairman Mazmeyer, County Commissioners, thanks for the moment. I won't take up too much time. I'm actually going to speak on behalf of what Mike Brewer is going to speak to here in a moment, and that's the, the tribe's support of future development in South Tumwater Thurston County area. My name is Chris Peters. I'm the chairman of Squawson Tribe and a lifelong resident of the Steamwood Island area in Thurston County. Development, as the gentleman said, is going to happen. We're seeing it all around us. We're not opposed to development as long as it's done in a good way. And what we're seeing is, quite often, this development is done somewhat thoughtlessly at times, clear-cutting, not paying attention to water use and septic and the environment. What we appreciate with this development is that the company came to us early and spoke to us, asked questions. We asked questions about water use and septic and the impact on the environment, and they were transparent, answered our questions. We believe someday that area is going to get developed. We appreciate the fact that this group is willing to do it in a thoughtful and careful way. Also, there's historical significance to that area to us and all the indigenous people in this area. It's been somewhat of a secret, but we've been keeping an eye on it and knowing that someday it's going to get clear-cut and developed over. We appreciate that these folks came to us and said, hey, we recognize that there's cultural significance to this area, and we want to actually harness that. We want to honor it and raise it up and educate and show people how important this area was and why it was so significant to indigenous people for really thousands of years. And so for that, we do support the development. You'll learn more here in a moment, and as the time goes by, but just wanted to say thank you for the time, and my hands are raised to you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mike Brewer is up next, and then, next one who wanted to testify is Charlotte Persons. On deck. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mike Brewer. I am an applicant proponent of the Bar Holding Salish Landing project, and we look forward to being welcomed again to the docketing process at a high priority. Our project has been years and years in the making, and we're very grateful for Chairman Peters and the Squawson Tribe's support of it. As you know, the open comment period generated a lot of buzz and interest on many different docket items, but ours in particular got a significant amount of positive and not-so-positive comments. We submitted testimony, speaking to the legality of some of the opposition and some of the realities of the developability. I think we have invested an incredible amount of time and, and expertise through outside experts at the request of the county planning group to find answers to some of the unknowns. I think that there's been a heck of a lot of preliminary consideration of our proposal, and I think my most important point today is that we, as applicants, look forward to working through a developers' agreement. One of the unknowns or liabilities for the county would be to adjust the urban growth boundary through the urban growth swap law, and then repurpose the zoning designation, which would, in theory, allow for a multitude of things to be constructed there. We, as applicants, want to commit to a developers' agreement that locks in the vision and ensures that the county's theoretical liability for various developments to occur cannot occur. And so we are very confident in the, the footprint and the occupancies that we have proposed. We are very excited to bring a YMCA to the community and contribute greatly to the multifamily housing, bringing about 200 units to South Tumwater. And I know that Kyle Kronk from the YMCA, South Sound YMCA, is going to testify from Zoom, but one of their outreach programs that I most appreciate is the recognition of the need for rural population to have access to housing and facilities like a YMCA. And so the proposed location for the, the Salish Landing development is highly strategic because not only will it serve the municipal population of, of the Tumwater constituents and the 2,000 homes that are within two miles of our location, but it'll also be a big benefit to East Olympia residents, City of Tonino residents, and, and other South County residents off Tilly Road, Scott Lake, and, and the like, that, that this will serve a meaningful, or bring a meaningful facility to, to our community. So thank you for your time.
Okay, Rob Rice, you did not want to testify? Okay, then next up is Charlotte Persons with Lynn Fitzhugh on deck.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Persons, and I live in Olympia. I'm making a comment on Attachment B, which is called tree conservation, to Chapter 17.25, the Ordinance for A25 Forest Lands Conversion Code Update. I am the first of many who will be saying that this ordinance does not protect enough trees. I'm also presenting another reason to delay approval of the code update. As you may know, ESB 6120 was signed into law last Friday, March 15th, and on the same date, the State Building Code Council deleted the 2021 WUIC Code amendments. That means that right now, there is no WUIC code. Therefore, all references to defensible spaces required by the 2021 WUIC code amendments must be removed from Attachment B. I ask you also to delete 17.27400A3. It states, "As trees grow, thinning is allowed to maintain appropriate density." According to staff, this provision is included to allow thinning as part of creating defensible space to prevent home destruction by wildfire. As such, A3 is a not-so-obvious reference to the now-deleted 2021 WUIC code. A3 should be deleted along with the other sections that reference that code. Whether defensible spaces around homes actually protects them during a wildfire fire is not controversial. That is one of the reasons that ESB 6120 does not include any defensible space requirements. Lack of time prevents me from explaining in detail how wildfire science has changed since the Wildland Urban Interface Section of the International Building Code was first written in 2003. Here's a quick overview. Recent studies published since 2007 have found no clear evidence that defensible space is helpful. These studies examined the effects on homes during actual wildfires in Colorado, California, Oregon, and Washington. I found five studies by different authors who used different technologies but reached the same conclusion. Defensible space had little or no effect on home destruction. Other factors were more important. All of them recommended that the most important action for home builders in high-risk wildfire areas is to use ignition-resistant materials and methods. That is exactly what ESB 6120 requires. Second, the provision in A3 would allow "thinning as trees grow," in quotes. It would allow tree removal many years after the tree plan has been approved and implemented, and when there will be little or no enforcement by the county. Thurston County should avoid creating mandates that do not, that it does not plan to enforce, both because A3 is part of creating the increasingly discredited defensible spaces and because it is virtually unenforceable. Please remove it. And if this means that we have to wait another month to approve the tree code, I hope you will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Lynn Fitzhugh is next. Teresa Jennings is on deck.
Lynn Fitzhugh from Olympia. I would like to start with, what do we really want here in this tree ordinance? I think we would all like to see as many trees saved as possible to meet and meet the climate mitigation plan while still allowing development to occur. I must confess, I have been reading the previous versions of the code incorrectly. So I thought, and I think some planning committee members thought, that we were talking about saving a percentage of the trees in the two designations. In fact, we are talking about saving 100 points of trees. Not 100 trees, but 100 points on one acre. This would mean between 2 and 10 trees on one acre. That is the same number as on my .15 of an acre that I own. That is pretty naked for an acre. We all know that the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan relied heavily, too heavily, on tree planting and discovered after the fact that they needed to retain as much cover as possible while development happens. The recent LiDAR study shows that Olympia has 62% tree cover and Lacey 28% tree cover in these already developed cities. I think after development in the county, we would want to at least match and not be less than the cities. So ideally, we need to be talking about saving a percentage of the total trees on these five acres that one home sits on. If we cannot do that, we need to double or even triple the number of tree units to 200, so that would have you save 4 to 20 trees, or to 300 points. That would save 6 to 30 trees. Also, with any tree unit system, heritage trees are so rare that it should be 100% of them saved. And for landmark trees, the Planning Commission had a motion that failed by one vote to move that percentage from 30 to 50%. Please keep in mind that because of the cap on the points total, that does not mean that we would actually save 30 or 50% of those total landmark trees, but just the percentage within the cap. Also, as Charlotte has explained, the line on A3, page 20, does need to be struck because it does not conform to the recent science. And with the number of trees coming down, it would be a loophole for further cutting. Last month, Senator, Commissioner Edwards said that if we have waited five years for this, we can wait one more month to get it right. Please send it back for changes and give direction about whether you want more points or a percentage of overall trees with awaiting for landmark and heritage trees. I realize that there is some burden for builders, but it is possible to build while leaving trees, especially on five acres. Under climate change, we will all have to do some inconvenient things to survive as a society. Thank you.
Okay, Teresa Jennings is up, and then we'll go to folks on Zoom.
Hello, I'm Teresa Jennings. I live in the urban growth area east of Long Lake. I want to thank the board for your interest and for your work at preserving the trees in Capitol Forest. Capitol Forest. And I think it's important to keep in mind the ideals that we have there. Secondly, as already noted, I would like to point out that there are many people who cannot attend this 2 o'clock meeting. It's very convenient to me, but to my daughter and her husband who are working, or my grandson who is in school, these meetings are not convenient, so they're not here. Yet, these are the people that are going to be, for whom this ordinance is critical to their future. It is these young people, these working people, not me as a retiree who no longer have to be quite so invested, but these working people and these young people who you may not be hearing from. Add to that, the arcane nature of a ordinance means that in this media desert in which we live, the attention to this issue is relatively rare. So, I would like to, as already noted, these trees are very important to mitigate the effects of climate change, to do more with carbon dioxide than almost any other thing that we could do. And if I think back on my own home, which is a half-acre lot, which is, you know, big today, I have 20 trees on that lot, 20 trees that are Douglas firs. So it's not necessary to be cutting down all these trees in order to build a home. We can do this. We do not have to clearcut the land in order to build homes. It's been done before. It can be done again. And my neighbors and I, we have fought to protect these trees. And I want you to understand that when I look at my next-door feed, what I see most after I see prime concerns and lost dog concerns, it's a bemoaning about the loss of trees and the amount of tree cutting that's going on. So this ordinance that you are considering today is very vital to the citizens of this county, as vital as the trees in Capitol Forest are. So I ask you to pause to get this ordinance right because it's not just an ordinance for today, it's an ordinance for the future. We have to pay attention to this for our children and for their great-grandchildren. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom who did not have a chance to sign up? Mr. Trowbridge, I see you. Why don't you come on up?
I'm Trowbridge. I live on Patterson Lake. I hadn't intended to speak today. Believe it or not, I'm pretty happy with the way things are going on, my issues. But since I got here today, I heard that you guys had been discussing my issue of the ownership of the bottom of the lake. And I just wondered if you could report back to me what you discussed and what, if any, decisions you made.
That has not been discussed. It's on a schedule for the next week or so. So, we don't have not addressed that yet.
Okay.
It's coming. Okay, if there's no one else in the boardroom, I'll go to Zoom, and I can't read the names. Can the county manager help me?
I'll see if I can help. The first person I see who I do not believe is staff is Rhonda Hunter. Ms. Hunter, would you like to provide testimony?
Yes, I would. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Rhonda Hunter, and I own acreage and where I have lived for about 50 years here in South Thurston County, where we are zoned in a mostly forested area, 1 to 5 acres. While some development is necessary, I believe it can be done wisely without destroying so much forest. As an ecosystem biologist, I know the trees provide the foundation of habitat for many other plants, birds, and animals that also live here. And I'm not just saying this because, you know, I have affection for these critters or whatnot. This is biodiversity, which we are in a crisis with around the planet, and we need to protect habitat for other beings besides just ourselves. Shade, food, nesting, cavities, trees, large and small, make up this forested ecosystem. And as our summers grow hotter, these trees also shade the salmon creeks so that the salmon stays, so the water, sorry, stays cool enough for the salmon to have enough oxygen to breathe in that water. Warmer water holds a lot less oxygen, so we need the trees to shade the creeks. These trees filter rainwater, and they hold the ground in place during big floods, which, as climate change advances, like University of Washington Climate Impacts Group said, "There will be more water when you don't need it and less when you do." So, that's pretty much what we've been experiencing, and they said that over 20 years ago. These trees also breathe out oxygen, which us mammals breathe in, while the trees breathe in the very carbon dioxide that we're polluting the atmosphere with, and they sequester that carbon locked in their wood. We need the services of the trees in the forest as much as the rest of the critters around us need them. So, clear cut of acreage to develop more land. You can leave far more trees than what you're proposing in what you have before you hear. Please triple the points to 300 or even more. And I'm in favor, as others have said, of delaying this decision so that you can have more input about it. I also want to point out that we're going to get hotter and hotter summers. I have had my thermometer in my garden read 120 degrees two summers ago. That's stunning. And last summer was very hot also. You're going to swelter without tree cover and shade near your home to shade your roof? Wildfires, they say, you know, put a defensible space around your house, clearcut out the forest. You've got to be kidding me. Wildfires on a big wind can throw embers far further than a defensible line that you can cut around your house. Defensible space is not as functional as fireproof roofing or siding even. So please protect more forest, not less. Thank you.
Next, I have Carol Goss.
Yes, thank you. My name is Carol Goss, and I live in unincorporated Thurston County, approximately a mile from Tomy State Park. And since moving here just about eight years ago, it's been shocking to see how much development is going on and how quick just a scorched-earth approach to this development is taking. I would like to add my voice to Charlotte Persons and others who have articulated why preserving tree canopy without this sort of scorched-earth, clear-cutting approach. The trees that are cut down will be gone forever, and how will we continue to enjoy the benefits of tree canopy unless we push the pause button on making these decisions? And I'm very grateful to be living where I am. I live on, just under, an acre and have a small forest in my backyard. And as I see wildfires coming, I agree with what Rhonda Hunter was saying about just one small fire can make us lose whole areas. So I not only hope that tree canopy will be preserved, I really am hoping to see a burn ban in Thurston County because every time my neighbors are burning their own land, their own property, it makes it almost impossible to walk in this area. And I basically am holding my breath, praying that someone with a hose is standing by as these areas are being scorched. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate the county commissioners giving us an opportunity to come forward and speak out.
Thank you. Next, we have Kyle Cronk.
Awesome. Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. I just want to say a quick shout-out to the county commissioners. Thank you for your service. It is a very challenging job to do what you do, so thank you for that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Kyle Cronk. I'm the president and CEO of the South Sound YMCA, and I'm here to talk about the Bar Holdings Salish Landing project. This project, as Chairman Peters and Mike Brewer talked about, this is a catalyzing project connecting South County to essential services for kids, families, seniors. And as Thurston County continues to grow, you know, we need smart development like Salish Landing. It's going to be essential. And the coolest part about this is the collaborative nature of how this project came to be. We're talking about county, city, private developers, nonprofit, tribal communities coming together, and it's really going to build kind of a model for how smart, sustainable growth can continue to move as Thurston County continues to develop. And as Mike Brewer was talking about, we can't leave rural communities alone. We can't leave them to fend for themselves. And this project is a project that's going to unite both kind of the urban to the rural section of the community down south on the I-5 forward door or right off. It's just an amazing project, and I just hope that the county commissioners, when it comes to docketing, that you prioritize this top of the list because I think it will be a model for the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Karen Hall.
Sorry, I am just attending.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Karen. Mary Ann Tompkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank the county commissioners for letting us speak today. I am here to talk about the tree conservation and the forest lands conversion. And I'm probably going to echo a lot of what's already been said, so I will keep it as brief as I can. But I live on acreage in North Thurston, unincorporated. And I did have a home built, and I was able to save almost all my trees. I took down just a few small trees. And it took me a while to find a builder that would work with me, but I found him, and we saved heritage trees and landmark trees, all of them, on my property. So, it can be done. It's not, it's, it can be done. Because, so right now, on acreage out here, we have Douglas squirrel and great-horned owl, piliated woodpecker. Piliated woodpecker, the Fish and Wildlife in Washington State, has said that they need about a home range size of 1,000 to 2,000 acres. So, we have to keep those things in mind when we're building because it's not just tree loss, it is the habitat loss that we're experiencing. And I want to thank you for working towards good tree policies for our county because without these rules, it's very easy for neighboring properties to just, because this happened recently, to just clear out maybe two or three logging trucks off of heritage trees or landmark trees off of an acre. But, so, what my builder understood when he built this for me is that trees were infrastructure, and he was able to work around those because he understood the importance of that. I also want to mention, as I start to close this, is that we have in our own DNR a wildfire scientist by the name of Daniel Donata. And he did a interview recently, and I'll probably try to send to the commissioners so you can read it, because he is our leading wildfire expert scientist. There was something in there that he talked about thinning for fuel reduction because that's also in your forest conversion and as a sustainable management approach. But he said there's consequences for altering the forest structure. And I'm just going to read just a very small portion of this. I'm going to skip ahead. He said, "We must expect that some fires will simply not respond to firewise-type treatments and be prepared with other contingencies like evacuation plans that are similar for hurricanes and tsunamis. There's nothing fatalistic about this idea. Rather, it's critical for saving lives and part of being smartly prepared with humility for a force of nature. Another consideration is what we're taking on and what we're making when we consider fuel reduction treatments such as thinning in west-side forests." So these are some of the most productive and naturally biomass-rich forests on the planet. Quite simply, reducing fuels to meaningfully moderate fire behavior in these systems is a formidable task, and importantly, requires keeping pace with incredibly fast growth rates. And there's the real possibility of creating stand structures with no natural analog, as low-density or low-biomass stands likely have little precedent in moist west-side forests. So, he says that it's west-side settings, the treatments that firewise, like thinning, is promoting, may not be restoration like they are in drier east-side forests.
Need you to wrap up, ma'am?
What's that?
Just need you to wrap up. Finish your day.
Okay, I just want to quickly say that he just says that we could change our ecosystem services and turn it into an unrecognizable area. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person I have on my screen is Tyra Ziegler.
Hello.
Hello.
Would you like to speak today?
Yes, yes, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tyra Ziegler. I live in downtown Olympia. And first, I want to thank you for your service to Thurston County. I am here today to speak to Agenda Item 4A, updating the ordinance for Forest Lands Conversion Code. And I am one of the young people who will feel the long-term effects of our land policies, the long-term effects of climate change, and who is even lucky enough to be able to address the board today. I am here today with concerns about the proposed language to update the code and ask that the adoption of this update be rescheduled to give the county time to respond to these concerns. I am glad that the new language emphasizes the importance of heritage and landmark trees and the importance of diverse species. Older and larger trees provide more canopy coverage and more stable root systems that prevent erosion and promote stormwater drainage. However, as the updated language currently reads, 100 points per acre only protects 2 to 3 heritage and landmark trees per acre, which is far from the tree density we need for healthy ecosystems and strong connected canopies. We, as a state, have passed a number of measures in recent years to mitigate climate change, including updating the Growth Management Act to require that we include climate elements into our comprehensive plans. Guidance to cities and counties from the Department of Commerce specifically identifies urban tree canopies as community assets to protect in service of climate resiliency. Washington's trees and forests are one of our greatest resources for industry, community, and climate stability across not only our state but the rest of our neighbors in the Pacific Northwest. But we are running out of time to preserve what remains to us. Please protect 100% of heritage trees and 50% of landmark trees, and increase the tree unit requirement per acre to 300 or even 200 points. Thank you.
Great. The next person I have is Esther Cronenberg.
Hi. Hi, how are you?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
All right, thanks. I'm also here to comment on the tree ordinance for Forest Land Conversion in agreement with everyone who's spoken, you know, previously about the value of the trees for our health and for the protection of our water resources. An example of, you know, I know Commissioner Manz is familiar with what happened over at Cooper Crest under this ordinance. As horrifying as that clearcut looked, it could have been even worse. As horrifying as that clear cut looked, it could have been even worse under this if they could only leave, you know, if they would have left like two trees, they could have just left a couple of trees there under this ordinance and it would have looked even worse, which is hard to imagine. So, uh, it seems to be a real problem with the way it's written now. And, um, um, it appears that you need to really take another look at it and not adopt it until you're really aware of the future ramifications and concerns of people, legitimate concerns that we're raising. Um, the beauty of this area when I first moved up here like 20 years ago was that it was carved out of the forest and you felt like the forest was the main resident. And that's what makes this place so beautiful and, and so healthy to live in. And so it's imperative that you, is pay much, much attention to preserving the county trees as you've done preserving the trees in Capital Forest. So I urge you to, again, delay adopting this so you know the future concerns and, and to, uh, you know, make tree protection a high priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, uh, everyone else on the Zoom screen, our county staff who are here to present various items on your agenda this afternoon.
Okay. And we can move on to county manager's update.
I have no update at this time.
Okay, um, sorry, we did not get, we did not do an approval of the agenda. I skipped that, I believe, before we did public comments. So let's go back and have a, um, discussion about the changes we've made since this morning's agenda.
Since this morning, the changes to your agenda were the addition of items, uh, three F, G, and H, uh, which are all appointments to the Thurston County Board of Equalization. Um, you also took what is now item four A, a resolution reclassifying a position in the county off of consent agenda and moved that to a department item. Those are the only changes at this time that I am aware of.
I move to approve the agenda for the March 19th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting as presented with the changes that were mentioned. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion on the motion?
I would, uh, like to amend the agenda.
You have to make a motion to amend. Uh. Motion to amend the motion.
Yeah. I would, uh, amend to, um, remove item five A from the agenda and have a work session scheduled for the board to discuss the public comment that we received today and get more information from staff. Second.
Motion is second to amend the agenda to remove five A for a further work session. Otherwise approve the agenda as laid out by the interim county manager.
Yes.
Um, any discussion on the amendment, Commissioner Mejia's amendment only, of whether we want to remove five A?
I, I just want to make a point. If you do pull it from the agenda this way, it doesn't give any of us the opportunity to speak today on the issue. So, I mean, if, if you, you know, if you do want to speak to any of the comments that were made, you would want to keep it on the agenda and then make some type of motion to allow discussion and then move it. But, but if we just pull it now, there's no talking about it as we, as our meeting goes forward, which I'm okay with either way.
I guess I'll respond to that. Uh, and I appreciate that, Commissioner Fournier, but, um, I believe that the conversations that we're going to have, we might go into it a little bit deeper and it really won't allow us to really just have a full conversation with staff. Um, and I also want to give staff the opportunity, hearing the comments that they've received today, right, to be able to prepare, um, answers for them so they can come in and, and kind of present information to the board and, and, and not put them in the spot right now as we're having these conversations and expect them to have answers to some of the questions that we might have just from the comments that we heard. Um, and so that's why I, I feel that just removing it now and then having a separate work session where we can actually discuss this and go through, uh, some of the comments we've heard from the public today, give staff an opportunity to respond, see if there's other avenues that, uh, we might need to take at that time would be most appropriate.
Yeah, I, I, I just want this for the public to understand that it's very, you know, just, it's not satisfying when you come in and provide public comment and then you see something pulled and then it's going to be done a week later. But it's not, you know, nobody's avoiding anything. It's just, it's not a bad way to go about things. I just, it, you know, realize you won't get any answers today, potentially.
Although many folks directly requested that very action. So hopefully they'll understand that. Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, could staff tell us the history on this as far as the meetings that we've had up until today? I, I see staff in the room. I'm just, I'm asking that question. Is that, uh, would that be a proper explanation? Because I don't know the answer to that. It seems to we've had.
Pulled from the agenda, we don't get to talk about it.
Well, we have a motion on the table to amend the agenda and if Commissioner Edwards has information and it's, and it's right here in front of us, I think it's efficient for us to go ahead and have that. If, if Dana or Andy want to come up and answer just, the specific question is what has been the process that's led us to be here today with this proposed action? Just process.
Yeah, so with process, we've had two meetings with the, um, with the planning commission and a public hearing. And then three meetings with yourselves, two before the planning, or two before the public hearing and then one after.
And then a public hearing?
Uh, yeah, so there was a public meet, hearing and then a follow-up briefing. So three total.
Did the planning commission have a public hearing?
Oh, absolutely.
And the board of county commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, is that what you needed to know?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, I would just add to Commissioner Mejia's, most of the comments were about the, the, I was, the magnitude, I don't know what the right word to say is, but the tree protections themselves. But the first speaker, Ms. Persons, brought up the recent changes to the WUI code. Um, and I took a vote on the S- State Building Code Council that, um, eliminated that. And that was in response to legislative action that we were told was going to kind of change things. So I don't know if that connects and how it connects, but it's a very complex issue. And I would definitely want to at least, if there's references in what we're about to pass to a WUI code that no longer exists, that would be something that I think at a minimum, we would want to address. And then all the other elements that Commissioner Mejia and the speakers brought up are also worth. Because I'll frankly say, um, a lot of community support for this all along the way, including from some of the speakers that are in the room today. And so if, if there's been a misread there, it's something that I'd want to hear a little more about. Cause maybe I misread it, you know? I mean, I was, I was hearing from those folks all along the way as, as this ordinance, which, um, I was kind of the main instigator of 2019, putting this on the docket. So I want to make sure we get it right. Um, yeah.
I, I just want to say that I, I do agree that pulling this and reevaluating it is, is what I would be making a motion for if we were to keep it on the agenda. But just as far as like parliamentary nonsense is concerned, my understanding, like when she, when she makes a motion to amend it, we talk about the amendment. We don't talk about the actual subject. If we want to talk about the actual subject, we leave it on the agenda, somebody makes a motion, and then we talk about it when it opens that up. So I'm just, I'm being a nerd.
That's why we need a, an attorney.
No.
I'm trying to swallow. In Robert's rules, I think either of those processes is sufficient.
I think that, I mean, what, I think what Commissioner Fournier is correct is if we left it on the agenda, then staff could give the whole rationale for why actions are 100 points. And, you know, we could get into all that, but I agree with Commissioner Mejia that we're not going to really get answers, putting staff on the spot in this instance, given the nature of the different questions, and which includes the WUI code and other things. So I'm supportive of the motion. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. This is a vote on the amendment to remove five A from the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries. So now we have an amended motion to approve the agenda with the changes outlined by the interim county manager, but removal of five A. And is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. We have an agenda. Thanks for everyone who came and gave input today on all the topics. Um, we're going to get to item, then let's see, where we, where are we? County manager's update. There was nothing there. So we'll get to the consent agenda. We have items three, A through K. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve consent items three, A through K, non-debatable motion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item four A, department item, Commissioner's office, resolution classifying or re, I wrote over it, I think it says reclassifying position O three R zero zero seven seven eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, this item is a request to reclass, uh, county position, a current county position from a public information supervisor to senior program manager. This request is made because the job duties of the public information supervisor have changed, uh, significantly since January 1st of this year. Um, there have been, uh, additional requirements for the type of services to the county that this person is responsible for. The number of staff they supervise have, uh, doubled basically. They now have countywide responsibilities. So they are working out of class. And we are asking that the board reclassify the position. Um, any changes in salary would be absorbed by the Office of the County Commissioners. I'd be happy to answer questions that you have. I would say though, that, um, because this is for current personnel, um, I would ask that, uh, any questions you have be high level.
Okay, any questions for the county manager about what the item is? Is there a motion regarding the item?
I move to approve the resolution reclassifying position zero three zero zero seven seven A from a public information supervisor to a senior program manager and moving it from the Thurston County Management and Technical Pay Plan to the Thurston County At-Will Pay Plan.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to reclass this position. Um, discussion. Commissioner Edwards.
On this particular topic, uh, I believe next week, planning session, next week.
Tuesday, yes.
Next Tuesday, we will be, uh, talking about this from a countywide perspective. Uh, I understand that the county, uh, has a person in this position and that changes to that job description took place and that the change was not reflected in the job title or compensation. And that the county does not have a, uh, or does not have the ability to, uh, compensate in, for past performance is my understanding. So although I disagree with the process of singling out uh, any individual, uh, position because, uh, we're trying to do this in total. And I think that's going to come about starting from our meeting next week on this topic. Uh, we don't have, uh, that ability to compensate this person for their ear's work. And so begrudgingly, I think this is the only solution to be fair. Uh, with the person holding this position right now is to, uh, approve this motion.
Any other discussion? Um, I'll just say that I approve, I agree with most of what Commissioner Edwards just said. I'm going to take a slightly different position. I'm going to abstain from any votes on reclasses until we have that countywide discussion. I don't like the perception that we're proving folks positions that we're familiar with from the Commissioner's office perspective. That gives me, um, concern. Um, so this is just a timing issue. I do, and I know timing is important because, as you wait for the reason you said, but that's why we've asked this to be on next week's planning session and prioritize. So I'll be abstaining, but I think it's a, certainly a reasonable, um, change to be made. And, you know, it's just an issue of, of wanting to make it. So that I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And one abstention?
All abstained as well.
Two abstentions, three ayes, and this motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. We've removed five A, so that brings us to six A, Public Health and Social Services, a contract award for Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan Update.
Um, Kimberly Graham?
Okay.
There we go.
Go ahead. Kimberly, uh, give us kind of a, if you could brief the board on just kind of an overview of this item.
Sure. So this is a required plan that the county has to have that says how we're going to manage our hazardous waste. Um, it is funded by a grant by Ecology at 75% and then a 25% match of tipping fees. And we've selected HDR to be the contractor that will update it for us.
Any questions for Kimberly? Covered this in a couple of work sessions, so, uh, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Uh, this is, uh, I, I move to execute the contract for the update of Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan Update with HDR Inc. in the amount of $83,126 and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and any change orders for this up to 10% of the contract.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to execute this contract for the hazardous waste management plan update. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is Public Health and Social Services, six B, Contract for Trillium Housing Services. Tom Webster looks like for Public Health to give us a thumbnail.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. Tom Webster with Public Health and Social Services. So here today to ask your approval, uh, for authority to sign a contract with Trillium Housing Services for $2.65 million for the construction of the Lansdale Point Apartment Project. This is a project to construct 162 units of affordable housing, um, in the city of Olympia. These will be one, two, three, and four bedroom units. Um, the funding source for this is, we're requesting is the county's ARPA, state, and local fiscal recovery funds. Um, this project, um, as I said, will be located, located in Olympia, just across, um, very near from, from the courthouse. Um, Trillium is a nonprofit organization. They're in partnership with Southport Financial Services, which is a for-profit developer that has the office within the coma. This is a, a project that is, was approved and recommended by the Regional Housing Council, uh, last year. So we are looking to move forward with closing on this project, probably in, uh, sometime in April, early May, with construction starting, uh, sooner after. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Tom? Is there a motion?
Move to approve a contract with Trillium Housing Services in the amount of $2.6, $2,650,000 for the construction of Lansdale Point Apartments and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Service to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the contract with Trillium Housing Services. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank, uh, Tom and Alex for, uh, quick, thinking quick on their feet. Um, and I really appreciate kind of their willingness to, um, come up with ideas to use those ARPA funds.
Thank you.
No further discussion. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Public Works is up next, seven A, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Furnishing a Supply of Various Asphalt Materials. Mike Lowman, Road Operations Manager from Public Works. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Lowman, Road Operations Manager. Public Works is requesting a call for sealed bids to furnish Thurston County Public Works with the supply of various kinds of asphalt and road maintenance materials for annual road maintenance work. On a yearly basis, the Road Operations Division requires different asphalt materials to perform road maintenance activities. The actual amount of the material may fluctuate during the year, and the purpose of this bid process is to secure the best unit costs for each material. This maintenance work supports Initiative Eight of the county's strategic plan to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community.
Questions for Mike?
Is there any questions? Sorry.
Nope. Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution and call for sealed bids for furnishing a supply of various kinds of asphalt materials and road maintenance materials to the Public Works Department for annual road maintenance activities.
Second. Motion and second for a resolution and call for sealed bids. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on. Public Works, seven, B. Resolution granting a non-exclusive franchise to PUD for a water system within Thurston County rights-of-way. Craig Sisson, Real Estate Services Manager, to brief the board on this topic.
Thank you, Commissioner. Craig Sisson, Real Estate Services Manager for Public Works. Public Utility District Number One of Thurston County, Thurston PUD Number One, has applied for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a water distribution system within Thurston County right-of-way. The affected rights of way are within legal boundaries of Thurston County, excluding those areas located within incorporated areas and cities and towns, including but not limited to Olympia, Lacey, Yelm, Tenino, Rainier, and Bukota. A public hearing on the application for the franchise was held by the Board of County Commissioners on March fifth, twenty-twenty-four. The Board of County Commissioners approved the franchise application of the Thurston PUD for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a water system. The Board will need to act on the resolution to grant the franchise to the Thurston PUD for a non-exclusive franchise for a water system within designated Thurston County rights-of-way for a term of ten years. The non-exclusive franchise process for a water system is consistent with the county's strategic plan and meets the initiative to proactively shape a strong, diverse economy that provides equitable access to opportunity. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Craig? Kate, is there a motion?
I move to approve a resolution granting Public Utility District Number One of Thurston County, Thurston PUD Number One, a non-exclusive franchise for a water system within designated Thurston County rights-of-way for a term of ten years.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for this resolution. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Public Works, seven, C. Execute license and indemnity agreement for a private power line. Todd Mason to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Todd Mason, Development Review Manager for Public Works. So I'm bringing before you a non-exclusive license and indemnity agreement between Thurston County and Helen Carl, and it's in the eight-thousand block of Zangle Road for the purposes of putting a private power line underneath the Zangle. It'd be in a conduit. If you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Questions for Tom? Nope. Kate, is there a motion?
I move to execute the license and indemnity agreement, Agreement Number Two-three-dash-one-zero-six-zero-eight-four with Helen W. Carl for a private power line under Zangle Road at milepost two-point-one-six-eight.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve this license and indemnity agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is item seven, D. Park Foundation Memorandum of Agreement. Karen Wees, Public Works Assistant Director.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karen Wees, Assistant Director, Public Works. Public Works is requesting that the Board approve a memorandum of agreement with the Park Foundation for fundraising services to support county parks, trails, associated facilities, arts, and cultural heritage programs for twenty-twenty-four. The Park Foundation is a local organization whose mission is to promote donations, to expand and support the facilities and programs I just mentioned. These funding services delivered include seeking grants, providing matching funds for grants, and championing fundraising for landmark projects. The memorandum of agreement under consideration establishes the relationships between the parties to accomplish these efforts. The county will contribute twenty thousand dollars of general fund to support the ongoing foundation operations and executive management. We will have a representative from the county who will serve on the foundation executive committee who establishes the annual work plan, priorities, and deliverables for the Park Foundation, and then provides selection and oversight responsibilities of executive management. Upon execution, the foundation and Thurston County will meet together to develop a funding plan to identify our county priorities, initiatives, and guide fundraising efforts. Any questions?
Questions on the Park MOA? No questions. Thank you, Karen. Is there a motion?
I move to approve that memorandum of agreement with the Park Foundation for fundraising services to support the county's parks, trails, and associated facilities, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the agreement.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the MOA with Park Foundation. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 It's approved. Thank you. You're up for the next item? Last business item is seven, E. Public Works Tilly Campus Conference Room Technology Equipment Upgrades.
Thank you. The second item's to authorize the purchase of conference room technology equipment for our two rooms at Public Works, the Rainier Room and the Dispatch Room. Presentation system upgrades with Desco AV for a price of approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. We are proposing a comprehensive upgrade to our systems. Our current equipment is more than a decade old, no longer functioning to meet the needs for our conference room usage. The first built room that we are proposing the upgrades is our dispatch room, and it is used for large meeting and trainings for internal and external parties. It's, and as Public Works is an essential services provider, uses this room for emergency response activities. And in addition, it is a part of our county's continuity of operations plan. Therefore, these facilities need to have functioning technology for those uses. Our second room, the Rainier Room, it's located off of the public entrance to the Tilly Campus. It's a highly utilized room with the public, contractors, and guests. And in addition, we hold several meetings that are open to the public, such as the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Noxious Weed Board, and Water and Sewer Utility Advisory Committee meetings there. Our current technology in there, again, is failing and no longer meets the needs of that particular room either. So we're proposing a comprehensive upgrade, rather than incremental replacement of these systems to provide a more cost-effective and coordinated system functionality. Excuse me. The scope includes upgrades of presentation system, including laser projector and motorized screen in the dispatch room, display monitors, microphones and speaker systems, and wireless presentation systems, including associated software and hardware. As mentioned before, the combined cost of this is approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, and that was received from Desco AV, who provided the lowest cost and best system proposal based on internal evaluation of our needs. Any questions?
Questions for Karen?
And this has probably been approved by the IT Committee?
Correct. It has been approved by the IT Subcommittee on February twenty-second of this.
Thank you. Kate, is there a motion?
I move to authorize Director of Public Works to purchase conference room technology equipment for the Public Works Rainier Room and Dispatch Room Presentation System. Upgrades with Desco AV for the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, thirty-three dollars plus ten percent contingency.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for this technology upgrade. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us to Commissioner Reports. Reporting on any work sessions, meeting, committee events, assigned committee meetings, as you wish. Start with Commissioner Mahia.
From yesterday, let's see. She put me on the spot. I thought I had a little bit more time. I attended the right-of-way meeting this morning, and we are heading in that direction where, you know, the Department of Commerce is talking about, you know, opening it up. And so I think one of the last sites that was talked about today was Percival Creek and kind of outlining that process. And then I attended an executive meeting for inner-city transit as well this morning. And then I attended a potential building for the Sheriff's Office.
I feel like I gave a pretty good report yesterday, but since then, yes, I attended a walkthrough of a potential building for the Sheriff's Office. I'm excited about us having just approved the contract with the Park Foundation. And I do have some suggested possible direction where we go on that. I'd like to talk about with the council as soon as possible. So if we could maybe get a brief moment to talk about that on an upcoming work session, maybe more, maybe like five minutes, ten minutes, that would be appreciated. That's it for me.
I think the main thing, other than the regular meetings, no, nothing setting the earth on fire there, but it seems to me that criminal activity, land use issues surrounding that criminal activity, animal services surrounded by that same criminal activity, and then just regular lake management discussions comprised the last couple of weeks for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Claus?
Okay, so I reported on a couple of these in work sessions, but since, just for the public to know, last week I did a tour of the Quahody Village in Shelton along with my seatmates, and that was a really good experience. I'm excited to continue working with them and see how we can help them expand that model. It was really eye-opening to see such a well-put-together model in Shelton. And I know we also have one in Townwater as well. So I'm just really excited to be able to meet face-to-face and see what that program is like. On Thursday last week, I toured the Thurston County Jail, and following that, I took a tour of the Fred Meyer Store in Townwater with union members from UCFW three-sixty-seven. And that was really informative. I'm glad to keep in touch with union workers in our community after connecting with them last year. Just keeping up with them, following up, and keeping in touch has been really helpful to maintain those relationships. I attended the EFSP Board Meeting last week, and I met with some constituents who were interested in police accountability issues as well as some local nonprofit issues happening in our community. And that's all I have.
Let me ask, what were the union members working on, or what were their concerns?
Their main concern was the automation upgrades in the store and how that could be potentially taking away jobs. They have actually, I don't know if you've seen it. It was the first time I ever saw it, but it's like a self-checkout that has the belt, so you can do self-checkout with like really big, you know, grocery hauls instead of the smaller self-checkout areas. And that was concerning to the workers because, you know, I guess, you know, there's concerns about self-checkout because it can take away jobs. And now that there are options for even bigger purchases, it's just kind of taking away more opportunities for workers to be face-to-face with their customers. So that was something that was concerning to them.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, you mentioned an acronym I didn't understand. E-E?
EFSP?
E-E-F-P, maybe that's what it is.
I don't know what the acronym stands for.
It's a hard time about our acronym.
So it's the Emergency Food and Shelter Program.
I was hoping someone else would.
I didn't know what it was. What is it?
That I didn't know what it was.
It says Emergency Food and Shelter.
Shelter Program.
Thank you.
It is through United Way, and it's one of our committee assignments.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize.
No, that's okay. That meeting was really good. We talked about awards for local nonprofit organizations who are providing emergency food and shelter programs. And that was actually a good meeting, but I unfortunately had to leave early to attend another meeting with constituents. There was a hiccup in my schedule that day, I guess. So I only got to attend half of it, but it was really informative.
Thank you. Okay, well, for me, other than just typical lots of committee meetings, which nothing was really that notable. Quahody Tour was interesting. Went to the Arbutus Folk Schools Open House. They have new space in downtown Olympia. That was cool. And then, as promised, I attended the Spongy Moth Presentation out in Steamboat Island, where we learned about the biological treatment they're gonna do to try to eradicate a spongy moth, formerly known as a gypsy moth, that really does a lot of damage in East Coast, and we're trying to keep it out of Washington. There's some egg masses that have been found right near, basically the epicenter is right where the commercial development is as you get off Steamboat Island Road and exit. So right there where the tribal gas station and the Griffin School and all that. So there's gonna be a perimeter, maybe, I don't know how big the perimeter is, half-mile, quarter-mile, something. Fairly compact area they're gonna treat. And they have to treat it at a very, very particular time window. So the pilots have to be ready like on twenty-four-seven, because when the temperature and these certain kind of leaf sprouts, that's when the caterpillars are coming out, and they don't want to kill any other kind of caterpillar.
Spray through the air?
Yeah.
In that area?
Yeah.
Like contrails?
Yeah.
Oh, man.
So that's why it was a big community outreach event over in my area of the county.
Wow.
So very interesting. It's all being done by Washington State Department of Agriculture. Okay.
Is it by helicopter, or?
I don't think so. I think it's like little tiny planes.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Ready? All right, here's your upcoming two weeks. Immediately following this meeting, you have a public hearing on the continuation of a telecommunications franchise with Michelle Telkamp. Immediately following the public hearing, you have a meeting of the Transportation Benefits District. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March twentieth, here in the boardroom, at nine AM, a work session will have the topics of a budget update, the FJC, or Family and Juvenile Center Control System, and the twenty-twenty-four construction project update from Public Works. Tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock, you have a Jazzcom, that is Joint Animal Services Quarterly Meeting. There are two executive sessions tomorrow afternoon, one on tribal permitting and one on lake bottom ownership. And the last item on your work session tomorrow afternoon is an update on the Lake Management District Standard Operating Procedures. Nothing is on your joint calendar for Thursday, March twenty-first, or Friday, March twenty-second. Looking at next week, on Monday, at your ten AM work session, you'll be discussing the, excuse me, the twenty-twenty-four Comprehensive Plan and Development Code Docket Updates. At twelve o'clock, you have a virtual assembly with WASAC, which more than three commissioners, or three or more commissioners, might attend. And at your two o'clock, on Monday, March twenty-fifth, you have commissioners check-in. Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, at nine AM, is agenda setting, and at ten-thirty tomorrow. Next week, next Tuesday, is a commissioner's planning session, which will focus on HR items, parks, art, and recreation. On Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, your nine AM work session includes an executive session on a service contract amendment. Also includes a continued conversation regarding the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code Docket, and an overview of code compliance in our Community Planning and Economic Development Department. Your two o'clock work session next Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, includes a meeting with the Department of Natural Resources regarding land management. And the sheriff has requested that a vendor present to you the potential acquisition of something called Flock Safety. It is a camera system. On Thursday, March twenty-eighth, at four o'clock, on your joint calendar, is a South Sound Behavioral Health Hospital ribbon-cutting. There may be three or more. There may be three or more commissioners in attendance, so it is on the master calendar. That will be held at 605 Woodland Square Loop Street in Lacey.
What day is that?
That is on Thursday, March 28th, 4:00. Nothing on your shared agenda on Friday, March 29th. Looking way ahead at Monday, March 20, or rather, Monday, April 1st, your 10:00 work session currently includes the Timberland Regional Library 2023 Annual Report. There's the WASAC Virtual Assembly and Commissioners' Check-In. Then Tuesday, April 2nd, we are back here for Agenda Setting, and on the afternoon of that date is your regular board meeting. There will also be a public hearing on April 2nd regarding an ordinance amending Code Section 2 Point 112.030, which would expand the Veterans Advisory Board Membership. I would also mention an upcoming event on Saturday, April 6th, at 5:00 PM, which is the Seeds of Hope Gala. That is, I believe, open to the public. So that is the next two or so weeks. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the agenda.
Okay, no questions, looks like. We will come to the end of today's agenda, so we're adjourned. Let's take five minutes or so before we take the public hearing.
Thank you.